I call to order this meeting, uh, this work session meeting of the Gladstone City Council and Gladstone Planning Commission. For Tuesday, September 24th, it's 5:30 PM. The City of Gladstone is abiding by guidelines set forth in House Bill 2560, which requires the governing body of the public body, to the extent reasonably possible, to make all meetings accessible remotely through technological means and provide opportunity for members of the general public to remotely submit oral and written testimony during meetings, to the extent in-person oral and written testimony is allowed. Therefore, this meeting will be open to the public, both in-person and virtually using the Zoom platform. Zoom instructions were on the agenda to the meeting. The public is welcome to attend the work session in person or online. However, no public, public comment will be allowed. That's our, that's our, uh, uh, rule during work sessions. So we have one item on our agenda, the Gladstone Town Center Project Options. We will begin with a roll call to see who's here from the commission and the council. I'm Michael Milch, Mayor.
Natalie Smith, Planning Commissioner Chair.
Mindy Garlington, City Council.
At Smith, Planning Commission.
Sierra Cook, City Council.
Andre Langston, Planning Commission.
I'm Mercer, Planning Commission.
Jenny Volda, Planning Commission.
Andrew Labonte, Planning Commission.
Vanessa Huckabee, City Council.
Jake Wees, Planning Commission.
Greg Alexander, City Council.
Oh, sorry. I, I, I thought it was just the important people. Marty Jory, Economic Development City. That's him.
Anise Mate, 3G Consulting.
And Heather Austin, 3G Consulting.
So I believe Councillor Blough is, uh, Blough is still out of the country. And, um, Councillor Roberts is also, uh, out of the country, both in the UK right now. Amazingly enough, uh, our folks get around. Are there any planning commissioners absent tonight, or?
There are not.
Okay, very good. All right. So we know who's here, who's not here. I will turn it over to staff to make our initial presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Milch. And as Anise, uh, introduced herself, I will still just give her an extra introduction because I know you all see me fairly frequently, but, um, Anise is in our long-range planning wing of the Planning Department in 3G. And she specializes in public involvement and facilitating discussion. So, um, it has been great to have her on this project and have her as part of the community fronting piece of it. And this evening, I'm going to present some slides and then Anise is going to guide the discussion at the end of the evening. So, um, with that, we will do a little slideshow.
Hold on just a moment.
Okay. And of course, we're happy to answer questions as we go along. We'll have plenty of time for questions at the end. Um, this is pretty heavily, um, worded and information-based, but it's based entirely on the information we submitted to you last week in your packet. So hopefully nothing's, um, new or surprising, but happy to go into detail about anything there's questions about.
Right.
Okay. Let's see, start at the beginning.
Hang on just a moment. Sorry.
No problem.
This slideshow or are we just following?
Just following here. Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So, welcome to the work session this evening. We planned a 90-degree evening because we knew it'd be too hot. You wouldn't want to hang out outside. So there's air conditioning here. Um, we will try to enjoy this, as the mayor said, last nice day of summer, um, together.
Let's see. Maybe. Oh, wait, there it went. I think I might've turned it off, but we'll try. Okay.
Um, this evening we'll talk about the, uh, Town Center Project, give a little project overview, some process and schedule, the boundary options that were both reviewed by the SAC and what discussions happened at the, that's the Stakeholder Advisory Committee that's been convened to work on this project, um, what they have initially reviewed and moved forward, and then what the public saw at their meeting in August when we had a, um, meeting at the community center to welcome public input and review of the options, and then talk about what we do next, where we're headed with this project.
Good to see if it's just delay. I think up here, right? Am I email? Oh, aim it that way. Oh, okay.
It should be able to. I just did it myself and you're going to want to push the down button.
Oh, down. Sorry, Joey.
Planning Commissioners know I always struggle with this device.
There you go.
Okay. I think I turned it off accidentally. Okay, project overview. Um, so what is a Town Center designation? Um, the designation of the Town Center Boundary is required by the state and by Metro. And the boundary itself is meant to, um, encapsulate a walkable mixed-use development area for high-quality pedestrian, bicycle, and transit infrastructure. So the idea is to make it easy for people to get around without their vehicle, um, make it easy for people to get to a business from their, um, place that they live and vice versa. Um, the boundary will ideally help direct new development regulations and policies to support livability, economic vitality, and better serve current and future Gladstone community members. Were required by the state to consider market factors, like what types of developments might occur, given Gladstone, where it's located in the larger metro area, what types of, um, historic developments have come into the city, that sort of thing, uh, displacement risks. So who might we be affecting by making changes in these areas? And anti-displacement strategy. So what can we do to prevent having negative impacts on current residents and landowners and, um, and renters and people who already occupy this space? Okay, um, so I know everybody's familiar with previous planning, um, projects that are similar. The 2017 Downtown Revitalization Plan and the 2023 Downtown Core Overlay District. Um, at Planning Commission last week, Commissioner Wees asked me to go into a little bit of detail about how these all interact with one another. So, um, sorry for all the words on this slide, but I was just trying to get it straight in my mind as well. Downtown Revitalization Plan really focused on the Portland Avenue Corridor. So it contains streetscape designs for a mixed-use corridor from Abernethy to Exeter, um, and then a downtown core from Exeter to Arlington with a festival street-type, um, development from Exeter to Clarendon. So the real heart of the downtown core area. Um, it focused gateways at key intersections to draw people in and be a focal point along Portland Avenue. And it called for some zoning updates such as, um, allowing more mixed-use development and more development of the site as a whole to be able to, um, sort of invigorate, uh, private investment in the area. So then, right below Downtown Revitalization Plan, we have Downtown Core Overlay District. That was the zoning code updates that came directly out of the Downtown Revitalization Plan. So what happened with that project was they took what the Downtown Revitalization Plan said should happen with the Land Use Development Code and went ahead and put that, it, it implemented that, it put it into the development code. So now we have this Downtown Core Overlay District. However, the geographic boundary, that's pretty limited, Exeter to Arlington, so about four blocks along Portland Avenue and including all of the C2 zoning, um, on either side of Portland Avenue. So that, um, those zoning code changes do encourage mixed-use pedestrian-friendly development. They allow you to, um, use more of your site to build your building, um, making it more feasible to get more housing units, um, a little more retail space to be able to use there. Um, we've seen thus far one project. It's the Food Cart Pod and Tasting Room that's coming in, um, on Arlington. That's part of the Downtown Core Overlay District. We do, um, have occasional conversations with, uh, people wanting to develop in the area. So I think, I think there's going to be more development based on these Downtown Core District standards coming in our near future. Um, so far, just one project since those were adopted. So, we wanted to, um, do this project, this Gladstone Town Center Project. Um, the first bullet there, we are state and metro mandated to do this. So we're required to draw this boundary, uh, make this geographic stamp on our city's zoning map and in our plans to say, "We declare this area our town center." But since we're required to do it, we want to be thoughtful about that and really focus the development recommendations and strategies so that we can encourage that reduced use of vehicles, more opportunities for biking, walking, using transit, perhaps, uh, looking at veh- at densities and allowing more people to live in the area, um, maybe making it easier to open a business in this area. Um, it's important to note that there is no required vehicle parking in a town center. So that's part of the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Language, um, within the town center and within a quarter mile. And I'll go into more detail on that in a little bit because I know that's kind of a newer piece of information that the Planning Commissions had a chance to look at that with the parking standards, but that's coming to City Council in October. So you haven't had a chance to fully see that yet. Um, the definition of a town center from Metro, "Town centers provide services to tens of thousands within a two-to-three-mile radius." So really, it's meant to support everybody in Gladstone and, and a bit beyond. Um, one, uh, one-to-three-story buildings for employment and housing are characteristic. So that really is how Gladstone is currently developed and what we, um, imagine is likely in the near future. Town centers have a strong sense of community identity and are well-served by transit. Currently, our highest service of transit is along McLaughlin Boulevard. So that's something to keep in mind, and we'll talk about that more as we look at the options for a town center. The area best served by transit right now is along McLaughlin. Um, so here are the things we could, we, we should include the Downtown Revitalization Plan and the Downtown Core Overlay District in our Gladstone Town Center because we've already done good, strong work in those areas. Why do anything that, um, goes against those? Because a lot of work, time, and effort's been put into them and they're good plans. They're good, um, good resources. We could expand beyond those to provide greater opportunities for focused redevelopment. So, um, we'll talk a little more about that, but sticking with just the Portland Avenue Core really limits you to the C2 zoning, which has been traditionally commercial. But expanding out, um, does give you some opportunities to look at, uh, residential uses and potentially, um, providing more housing types. Okay, next. Yes.
Where we allow middle housing?
Yes.
Like four units.
Correct.
So, how different is that?
Well, we haven't put any policies in place, but what's typical might be small apartment complexes, five to eight units, something like that. You might see something that size on 10,000 or 15,000 square feet, um, in some cities. So it's, it's a policy decision. You know, if, if the city decides middle housing up to four units is kind of where we're comfortable, um, having our residential, that's great. Um, allowing those slightly higher densities, um, can, can support more, um, variation in housing cost, allowing some prices to be lower. The CFEC, the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Language, requires that we meet a density of 15 dwelling units per acre, but you do get there with middle housing. So that's not a concern or a requirement that we add a multifamily housing element. Yep. Oh, microphone.
So in this boundary, we're looking at the, the 50-foot maximum?
We are, so that is only, and it's 45 right now in that downtown core.
An exception of five, though, for if a building needs it, correct?
I don't believe so, but we can pull that up. I thought it was 45, only if the first floor is 12 feet high. Is that, okay. Yes. Yeah. So it's 45 maximum, and that's only, it, it's 35 unless you have a 12-foot first floor, which is commercial, and then it's 45. But that wouldn't necessarily apply to the entire town center. Um, that's an option, whether you carry that forward or not.
Thank you.
You're saying that those standards are only in the, is it in the, uh, Core Overlay District only?
That's correct.
Okay.
Currently in our code, it's in the Downtown Core Overlay. So it's all of the C2 properties along Portland Avenue from Exeter, uh, Exeter to Arlington.
And, and we amended that from an overall height standard in the city that I think was three stories, but it allowed you to go one, or no, it was a, it was a fixed height limit, but allowed you to go one story above that if you had, uh, fire sprinklers on, uh, on the upper story. So, uh, in, in, in theory, three or four-story buildings have been possible. We just haven't seen any other than the hotel, uh, near the Safeway.
Add something to that.
Yes. And just to kind of add to what Heather's saying as well, one of the biggest misconceptions that I've heard from people is they confuse, because of the word "town center" sounds so much like downtown. I love this because it kind of shows the difference. It's not our downtown district. That's not what we're looking for. Our downtown is set. And that's our downtown core overlay, which is what we have registered with the State of Oregon for Main Street Oregon and, or Oregon Main Street. That's always, I mean, I can't say always. I think it will always be the downtown of Gladstone. The town center, just again, to reiterate what Heather said, is an area that we are obligated because of statement metro mandates, that it's a place that theoretically you can live, work, shop, and not have to really leave or use your car. That's the idea, that you can live in the same place where you work and you shop and you take care of your needs, correct?
That, that's correct. Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, yep. Uh, did I not move forward? I'm pushing down. I probably, oh, wait, point this one on. Let's see. Thank you, Tammy.
So just to give a brief, um, project overview. So as we said, we're establishing the geographic boundary, um, and then we're going to have some regulations, policy, and potentially economic incentives for development within this boundary. This will comply with Metro and the 2040 Growth Plan, and it will also count as our climate-friendly area, which we're required to put into place by state law. So it's really, I guess, um, two birds with one stone. I don't like that saying, but it, um, allows us to comply with our Metro requirements and our state requirements, um, to establish this area.
Next. Tammy, will you advance for us, please? Okay, we're, we're having trouble here.
Thank you. Um, so just as an area of focus, the, the idea is to determine the right geographic size and location of the town center. We know we have to have it. We know, um, we, like Portland Avenue is our downtown, as our main street. Um, but what is the right geographic size and how, which direction should we expand out from there? And how far should we expand, if at all? Um, we, whatever we do in this town center area is going to guide future development and will be looking to come next with development code updates that affect potentially minimum residential densities, expanding the permitted uses in this zone, reducing potentially development regulations. Um, one thing the Planning Commission has on their work program to talk about, um, in the coming months is, uh, some sort of design review. That's a limited design review level that's, um, done by, at the staff level, rather than coming to Planning Commission. So you wouldn't need to pay for the public hearing and the, um, all the time that goes into that. Um, but that would be, uh, potentially a tool we could use in the town center, where if you're developing something that meets certain criteria, that you could do that, um, much easier and more quickly. Um, and then multi, multi-modal connectivity, which we talked about in that Downtown Revitalization Plan. There's a lot of work that's been done about, um, bicycle lanes along Portland Avenue and widening of sidewalks and the festival street treatment and things like that. So there's already been a lot of work put into getting people out of their cars and providing different transportation options and making it easier and safer to do those types of things. Um, but again, parking reform is citywide. Um, there are no mandates permitted within the town center and within a quarter mile. Um, and just as a reminder on that slide, too, the, uh, State of Oregon did fund this project through a grant. So feel, um, I need to say that, um, when we present some of these topics. Oh, it's working. Um, process, oh, you did that?
No.
Oh, okay. Um, so process and schedule the major milestones with this process. We've, um, we've provided two to three Gladstone Town Center boundaries for analysis. We started with three, took those to the stakeholders. Um, we provided a market feasibility study with each of those. So that information was in your packet for this evening. Um, and we have it here in the slides, too, to go over, just in case anyone didn't have a chance to read all of that over the beautiful weekend. Um, parking reform, the Planning Commission just last week held the first public hearing on the parking reform citywide required with the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities. Rulemaking, City Council will be seeing that material, um, next week for your, uh, hearing on October 8th. So we're almost finished with that milestone. Um, and then next steps will be to refine, refine that town center boundary, really decide what the boundary should be, and then update our comprehensive plan, development code, and zoning map for any regulations we want to put in place there.
Nope.
Okay. Thanks, Tammy.
This is just our timeline for it. Um, Town Center Analysis has been happening, um, since last spring. We completed the market feasibility studies, um, and we're almost done with the parking reform, all of which are due sort of in fall here. Um, we had a public workshop this summer in August, um, and at the very bottom, the blue ovals. We've had the first two Stakeholder Advisory Committee meetings, and we have our third scheduled for October 21st. And then along the gray arrow along the bottom is all of you will be, um, intermittently briefing you, the Planning Commission and City Council as we go along with the project. So this is your first official briefing.
Nope. Thank you, Tammy.
Um, so, initial boundary options. We started with three boundary options that, that were in your packet this evening. The Stakeholder Advisory Committee, um, they've met twice, once in March as an introduction to the project, and once in June to review these three potential boundary options. Um, they received the market analysis and the displacement risk analysis and strategies so that they could help determine preferred boundary alternatives to move forward to the public, um, in the public hearing, uh, public meeting to get the feedback from. Um, so boundary option one, and this is, again, this is what the Stakeholder Advisory Committee saw last spring. This option reflects exactly, excuse me, the Downtown Revitalization Plan Boundary. So this is along Portland Avenue and includes the C2 zoning district on both sides. Um, it is primarily commercially zoned. Um, it, uh, has just a tiny bit of the, um, R5 Residential Zoning District. It's our smallest boundary at 35 acres, um, 62% sidewalk coverage currently. So these metrics, um, come from GIS. Um, they measure where sidewalk gaps are. So this has about a 40% sidewalk gap. There are 52 businesses and 117 housing units within this district, and of those housing units, 36 are multifamily. Okay, uh, so in the slides, um, or excuse me, in the packet, you saw the market factor evaluation for each of these areas. Option one, um, again, just the Portland Avenue Corridor. It's a walkable environment. It has limited access and visibility that's, um, you know, pass-through trips, maybe along McLaughlin, um, or in other communities don't necessarily see the, um, area as readily as they do some of the others. Um, there are residential-to-commercial conversion opportunities along, uh, Portland Avenue and adjacent in the C2 zoning. There's a lot of small-scale development opportunities, a lot of 5,000-square-foot lots. And then there are riverfront amenities. Um, this, the, the one difference between this and the Downtown Revitalization Plan is we did bring this down to the river because we really want to tie into the future trolley trail rebuild there. So each of the, um, options that you're going to see do that because we are sure we want to connect to that area.
I noticed you have in the middle box there, residential-to-commercial conversion opportunities.
Oh, yes.
And, um, a part of our discussion about the downtown, uh, revitalization and the other has been a desire to, um, add more housing. Uh, we have a statewide, um, you know, from the governor, uh, some goals, aspirations of adding more housing units across the state in individual cities. And we've conducted, um, a housing needs analysis for Gladstone, uh, and determined that a lot of people are paying a pretty high percentage of their income for housing. So if we had more housing opportunities for people, uh, perhaps at lower costs or lower than the current market costs, uh, that would improve the livability of our city. Uh, so when we were working on the downtown zoning changes, we were, we were trying to lean toward things that would make it possible to have more housing, not put barriers to housing, yet, and, and that could mean commercial properties converting to housing properties. But, as you know, if you've driven up and down Portland Avenue, quite a bit of it is housing. Uh, some of them have businesses associated with the housing, but, uh, they are all zoned to possibly be converted from their current housing use to commercial use. So it's just one of those things that makes this whole process very confusion, confusing because you have a couple of goals that seem to be going against each other. Uh, we want that commercial development to attract people in, to improve our tax base, to improve connections in the city, to have more needs that can be met within walking distance of where people live. So in some, one sense, we want more commercial development. We also have, uh, a shortage of housing, uh, shortage of affordable housing. So if we had more housing in the area, uh, that could improve that. So it's one of those things where we have a couple of, of, uh, goals and, and things that we have to kind of juggle the importance of. And I just want to point it out, uh, with regard to this particular section of the town.
Thank you, Mayor Milch. And that comment is actually very, um, pertinent. As the Planning Commission knows, we talked about this just last week. There have been changes in state law that require us to permit, uh, conversion of commercial buildings into residential, um, units. So on, when you get your packet for October 8th, you'll be seeing that language, um, in that as well. So you are right, at the state level, there's a, a push and pull about wanting to increase economic development opportunities and, um, revitalize business development, but also make sure that there's enough housing to support everyone who needs it. So, um, that it has been a tricky portion of a lot of the planning we've been doing recently. Okay, boundary option two. This option is, also includes the Portland Avenue Corridor and the C2 zoning, but goes west toward McLaughlin Boulevard. So in this scenario, we have about half of the area in the R5 zoning district, that medium-density residential, um, and almost a half in, um, commercial split between the C2 along Portland Avenue and the C3 general commercial along McLaughlin Boulevard. There's a tiny bit of OS open space, um, and the blue is MR, so multi-residential. Must have a little multifamily residential in there as well. Um, this one's larger, uh, over twice the size at 131 acres in size, has a little better sidewalk coverage, 68.2%. Um, it contains 83 businesses, 535 housing units, 121 of them multifamily units. Again, I know the, these numbers are much higher than option one, but it's also a much larger geographic area. So it's not, um, surprising that that's the case. But we just wanted to provide options that you could choose a town center, um, of pretty much any size. Some cities like, um, Sherwood have town centers that are, you know, 90 acres. Some cities like Cornelius have town centers that are more like 50 to 60 acres. Um, we are showing some, just some options in those different sizes. You, as a community, can decide how large you want your town center to be and what makes the most sense, given existing development patterns and what potential market, um, and anti-displacement strategies need to be put in place for the city.
Heather, could I ask?
Yes.
A broader question than option two is, we have to, from, from state and metro, designate the town center area. Is it, uh, likely that we'll see through legislature and DLDC, uh, like, language that then puts, uh, a charge on us to implement things in that area later?
That's a great question. And so if we weren't in the metro area, we would have really specific requirements for our, um, climate-friendly area. So we work in other cities, like in Southern Oregon and, um, in the coastal cities, and those requirements are like, your town, your, uh, climate-friendly area has to be at least 175 feet wide. It has to have, you know, it has like all these really specific metrics. But anyone in the metro, um, jurisdiction does not have to provide those specific, um, pieces. That said, Metro's working on some legislation of their own that would apply to anyone in the metro area. So we've been tracking that and working with Metro staff. And, um, Glenn Hamburg on Metro is sitting on this Stakeholder Advisory Committee and feeding back into our review, um, what Metro's saying. He has He has reviewed everything that we've been doing to date and has said, everything that we're talking about is complying with what Metro is planning to do. But I think the short answer is if the state or Metro said to do something, we'd have to do it. But we don't know of anything on the horizon in that way.
Okay.
And Metro has in fact said, yes, we are tasked with requiring you to create a town center that counts as your climate friendly area. And we're gonna write some vague language about that, but we're, to this point, I haven't heard them say they're planning any specifications for that.
Okay, so right now it's parking, which in our options largely not counting option three overlaps with our plate, our area that we don't have to require parking already from.
Yes. I do have a slide showing that for you too, because I know that's an important piece of this. Yeah, and, and parking reform is citywide with the climate friendly and equitable communities work. So the town center, um, you can't have parking within the town center within a quarter mile of it. But that's just a really small piece, as you know, because you've just reviewed the, the code updates. Kind, almost a small piece of what we're required to do for parking reform citywide.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering if things like, um, filling in that gap of, uh, sidewalk coverage could potentially be a future.
Requirement or something.
Yeah.
Potentially, and in some level of, so, um, some level of tree cover, something like that. Yeah, potentially.
Thank you.
Yes, but nothing I know of currently.
Yes. Oh, sorry.
So for, uh, area two, so headed toward McLaughlin. Here, of course, we have our major national auto chain, so we, um, are unlikely to see those redevelop. And in fact, we've seen, um, recent updates to several of those sites. So I think that they're pretty well invested in the community. But what we did find from our market study, um, from the experts who did that for us, Echo Northwest. As I said, they do see in other, um, communities, in other countries, that's, um, the way people are buying automobiles is changing. And so there might not always be the need for the large sea of asphalt associated with the dealership. And then that might have development potential. So they're seeing a lot more people who, you know, want this car. They might have a few that you test drive, but then you just order it and it's delivered or, um, more of that sort of a model. Um, and if that happened, if the market got to that point, then there is quite a bit of development potential along the McLaughlin Boulevard. Cause we do have a lot of, um, parking area that could potentially redevelop. Uh, we do have higher traffic speeds, um, and higher traffic volumes, which can be, um, difficult for pedestrians and unpleasant for residential adjacent. There are some commercial redevelopment opportunities, um, and newer commercial centers with abundant parking. So plenty of parking available to if you need, um, if you're able to develop or redevelop one of those properties. This, um, has more proximity to riverfront than the, um, Portland Avenue only that has just, uh, the access at the south end. There are some small scale infill opportunities. There's not much vacant land and, um, they actually had a lack of finding comparable situations to McLaughlin Boulevard through Gladstone. It's pretty unique. Yes.
Can you please?
I don't have a fully formed thought on this.
Okay.
So they, to no surprise anybody, but, um, one of the things that came up, which I found interesting in regards to being a rent burden town. Talking about the traffic and speeds and volumes, but it goes on to talk about some of the neighborhoods right next to McLaughlin. And the idea that I'm getting from this is that developers may not want to go into that area because, um, the achievable rents, basically they might not be able to make a lot of money off it, which are already expected to be relatively low in Gladstone compared to the region. Can you talk to that a little bit?
Yeah, I think that the, um, the bigger redevelopment potential is commercial. If you go into the boundary two option, I think boundary three that we'll talk about in a second has more residential redevelopment potential. But boundary two, I think is primarily commercial and it's primarily those, um, asphalt areas along McLaughlin. Yeah, I agree. I don't think it's residentially motivated in that area. McLaughlin is a very commercial thoroughfare. Yeah.
Just one last thing.
Yeah, of course.
It does, you know, because we have some high risk areas in our city for like earthquake, um, risk. And we can look at a Clackamas map for that. I know that some, a lot of this area in option two, it is in that type of zone.
Okay.
I don't know if that, that comes up in any of these conversations.
It did not. I don't think we looked at earthquake, um, stability at all. However, um, you know, I know Clackamas County reviews all of our building permits, so they have requirements for geotechnical investigation and building, um, appropriately to those standards.
I have one question. Any kind of development on McLaughlin? Would there be any impairment because it's a state owned highway? Would we have some restrictions or limitations?
They would definitely have ODOT involvement with any frontage improvements, any access. We are currently reviewing the building permit for the, um, former Pizza Hut site. It's now going to be a Wong's building, um, two-story showroom. And so they're right now in review with ODOT and that can be a somewhat lengthy, difficult process.
That's what I was kind of wondering. Thank you.
Yes.
Yes.
So many of the areas around us, Metro and, uh, Milwaukee and the greater parts of Clackamas County are really looking into the fact that a lot of our, uh, concreted areas have shut down our water flow, our, our, our natural water flows. Would those be, um, are, are we looking to further block them and not allow them?
Not allow water flow, like storm water, natural drainage.
Water displacement, uh, you know, they're opening these areas up to really let the water flow, not just to repipe it somewhere else.
Yes.
And, uh, uh, some of our, um, our, our car dealerships have basically diverted the water, you know? So once you take all that concrete out.
Yes, yeah.
So.
Yeah, that's a great point. So, um, for a while it was, you know, pave it and pipe it and put it into back into the system. But the conventional wisdom has sort of changed. It changed a little earlier in Washington County, but Clackamas County with Water Environment Services is starting to change too, where if you come in for a redevelopment permit, they're preferring to see, um, a swale on property instead of piping it or catching it in a catch basin. So I think if you were to redevelop your property, um, your first option would be the swale. And then I think there's a way to, it's, it's not a petition, but a way to say this property doesn't work well for that. So we'd like to do a catch basin or some other type of mechanical treatment system, they call that for storm water. But yeah, I think as people, it's, it, the city differs to Water Environment Services for storm water treatment and what happens with that. So, uh, but I know those, those are in place and they're ever changing those standards. So, yeah.
I have one other question. I do, I'm not seeing as we go from one to two, you talk a lot about the McLaughlin properties.
But the McLaughlin properties are already in one. So all, basically we're just including everything from McLaughlin down to the water.
That, let me just.
A lot of residential already.
McLaughlin is not in option one, so option one is just the purple boundary around Portland Avenue. So if you. Yeah, um, let's see, maybe I could.
Okay, I did read that wrong then. My apologies. Okay.
No, no problem. Yeah, so that purple boundary that's hard to see on this slide.
That's it.
Just that, that's option one, just that area.
And eventually I'm going to ask you how this all ties in with urban renewal funds, so think about.
Well, that will be a good question from our C Jory. Okay, let's, let's look at option three if we can get there. Oh, is that, okay. Okay, um, I will try that next time. Boundary option three is, uh, was reviewed by the stakeholder advisory committee. And this is the option that extends toward 82nd Drive, so to the west, excuse me, east, east. This area is more than 50% R5 middle density housing. It is, um, a little less with the commercial, but about equally split between the C2 along Portland Avenue and the general commercial over by Safeway, um, on 82nd Drive. And a little bit of open space with, um, the elementary school and the park adjacent there. 193 acres in size, the least amount of sidewalk coverage at just over 50%. 129 businesses, 600 total housing units with 50 of those being multifamily. So far fewer percentage of multifamily units when you head east in the city versus when you head west toward McLaughlin, which does make sense when you talk about there being transit access along McLaughlin and, and more services available there. So this option, um, just move.
Yep, cursor. Do you see it? Oh, there it is.
Perfect. So this option did have a really intriguing amount of redevelopment potential. So the, um, market analysis showed that there really could be some, um, interesting things happening on these commercial properties that several of them are, are what they'd consider underutilized. So, um, could be some real opportunities there to link this area into the town center area. Interestingly, I did hear from one resident at our community meeting who said, gosh, you know, I kind of wish there was more over in this side of town where I live. And, um, you know, everything's on Portland Avenue, which is great, and I want to see that develop more. But I'd really love to see more activity happening on the, the side of town where I live near, closer to 82nd Drive. So it's one comment, just anecdotally that I heard at that meeting. There are, um, a lot of riverfront amenities on this site, the most riverfront amenities, including high rocks, um, adjacent here. There are existing anchor businesses like a grocery store. This is where our only grocery store in town is located. Um, let's see, we have some small scale infill retail, uh, development, little vacant land. So, um, just like the option number one, option number two has the most vacant land with those parking areas on those sites. And again, lack of comparable sites. So Gladstone is, is a very unique community, um, in, from a market analysis standpoint, which I'm sure none of you are surprised about. Okay, so as far as displacement risk, which we talked about being, um, something that we need to look at when we determine our boundary. We wanted to consider, um, how many vulnerable households are present, um, what, who could possibly be impacted? What is the extent of the potential change to the development regulations? Because that can have an impact on who's, um, occupying the site currently, excuse me, and redevelopment potential, likelihood of redevelopment potential. So when we, um, looked at all of those different, uh, variables, we found that number one has the lowest displacement risk. Number three, so headed toward 82nd, has a medium level. And number two toward McLaughlin has the highest, um, displacement risk assessment. These numbers in and of themselves are not a reason to choose a boundary or not choose a boundary because as you saw in that report, there's also anti-displacement strategies that the city can implement with their town center project, um, to mitigate some of these effects. But it is something we're required to analyze. Yeah. Oh, two has the highest, two toward McLaughlin.
It was different than the order on the table.
I'm sorry, that was confusing. So, um, yeah, so number two going toward McLaughlin Boulevard toward the west has the highest displacement risk. So that's where we would, if we chose that as our boundary or a version of that, we would want to implement the displacement, anti-displacement strategies to go along with that boundary. Option number three, which is toward 82nd Drive, has a medium level. So it's something we want to be considering, but isn't as, um, highly needed as option two. And then option one, which is our Portland Avenue corridor, has the least amount of, um, displacement risk does, but will still be carrying forward some anti-displacement strategies with that boundary.
Heather, I have two questions on that.
Yes.
The first is when we're talking about displacement, are we talking about displacement of housing or businesses or both?
Um, this is focused on residential displacement.
Okay, and then, um, I'm wondering if you can just inform me a little bit better about displacement. So we're talking about displacement, but we're also talking about potentially increasing supply of housing. So how do you, how do you balance those potential outcomes?
Sorry.
Mayor mentioned that earlier, that there were odds on those two things.
Yes, yeah, and I, I, that's exactly what I was going to say too, is that, um, we, you know, the cheapest housing, I guess, they say is that the housing that already exists, right? New housing is never less expensive than what we have existing for comparable size and location and things like that. So keeping people able to live in housing that they already have can be a really important part of providing housing for your community. That said, there are opportunities where there's so few units on a parcel that redeveloping that and getting quite a few more units out of that makes sense. But if you're going to do that, you want to make sure you're taking into consideration where the current residents are going to go. And, and what you as a, as a community can do to help, uh, mitigate any harm from that type of policy. But yeah, it's definitely at odds, absolutely, yeah.
I'd also just mention that, um, the strategies, so speaking to the next slide, that is another tool to help balance or mitigate those kind of competing objectives. So when you're making land use decisions, incorporating strategies to help mitigate those effects are a way that you would help, yeah, balance those two.
So let's just go over that. So housing stability, you know, protecting your current tenants, making sure that they feel that they have a safe, secure place. Weatherization assistance for income quality, qualified homeowners. I know a lot of this work is done at the county level, but Gladstone is a partner in that. And that, um, we can continue working on that and put those anti-displacement strategies in place. There can be incentives for existing property owners, um, potentially, uh, with it being in the urban renewal district as well. And, and in increased supply of housing, adding more housing units takes pressure off existing housing units. So that's another way to think about anti-displacement strategies. Okay, so the stakeholder advisory committee looked at all of this information. They looked at the anti-displacement strategies, the market feasibility, and they decided to move forward to options to the community to have input on. The first is boundary option one, but it's been a bit expanded east and west. So now it goes to the end of the block rather than ending at the C2 zoning. So now you're incorporating more residential, which gives you more opportunities to look at residential uses and decide if you want to provide, other development potential for these R5 zoned properties. So it's, um, kind of boundary option one expanded. Um, and then option two was moved forward, which is the McLaughlin Boulevard, um, option. We did not, uh, hear from the stakeholder advisory committee that they wanted to move forward with option number three, which was the boundary headed over toward 82nd Drive. However, we'll talk a little more about that with our community meeting input. Okay, here's the parking map. So planning commissions had a chance to see this. It was in the packet with the climate friendly and equitable communities parking information. The green areas are the areas that we currently cannot provide parking mandates. So, um, McLaughlin Boulevard runs kind of right down, right down the middle, and then we're buffering half a mile in either direction of McLaughlin Boulevard by state law because it's our high transit frequent, uh, corridor, high frequency transit corridor. If we decide, oh, I went, oh, I just went too far on this one. If we decide to go with option one or option two, we expand this area by this much. So this is demonstrating a quarter mile beyond either option one or option two, because if you'll recall, they both have the same eastern boundary. So we already wouldn't have parking requirements on the west. I didn't worry about what happens to Meldrum Bar Park because it's park property anyway. So, um, I was less concerned. It might fall into the green once you, if you choose option number two. But, um, just as far as the impact on the properties to the east, this is what would be added. And by the way, Gladstone looks like a rhinoceros head and I can't unsee it. Um, even, I, I even zoomed out on the zoning map today just to make sure, and it really does continue to just keep looking like that, so. Okay, any questions about parking mandates there? Yes.
Well, no, they weren't about parking. Isn't, right now, we talk about higher density housing and, and, you know, the mandates and everything, but can't we put residential housing anywhere right now in Gladstone if we want? I mean.
Not anywhere you want. I mean, you couldn't go build a new residential development in commercial property. You could convert, well. You could convert, well, once we do the planning updates, but you couldn't just go build it in a commercial zone, new.
Okay, so because my other thing was, so I went, when I got the packet last week, I went and talked to two general managers, and you already pointed it out. Mitsubishi, Honda, Toyota, Nissan, Volkswagen, I put millions of dollars in those, they're not going nowhere.
Right.
Not leaving McLaughlin.
No.
So to go that way doesn't, you know, make any, I don't, to me, doesn't make any sense. And the other one was, doesn't this all come down to when it's all said and done? If it develops out, if it pencils out for developer, not our citizens?
Well, that, yes, so as far as parking goes.
Well, no, as far as everything goes, is anybody going to put in a new building, a new house, density, low density housing? Are are they going to do anything, commercial or anything? If it doesn't, if it doesn't pencil out for a developer? That's why I thought John Southgate would be here today. Remember him four years ago coming and talking about, and he talked to some developers? And he said there are people just said that our downtown core didn't look like a downtown core to people, and they weren't interested in investing.
Okay.
So does it all come back to the developer?
Well, I can add to that.
Sure.
I've met with a couple of developers as well, and it's not so much that the down, it doesn't look like a downtown core. It's that, um, things have had not happened that are happening now that have more development opportunities that will make it easier to be developed and more accessible to be developed. The the codes have already been changed before I got here to make it easier so that you can have upper floor housing in the downtown area. So yes, you can do that. Um, and yes, it has to pencil out for developer, but that's where urban renewal comes in as well, is that we can then have some pre-development offerings to invite people to come in and help us to revitalize this area and add those upper floor housing or develop a thing based on what city council, planning commission want and what city of Gladstone needs to see. But without a tool, say like urban renewal, I know this isn't about that, but I know Mindy, you're really curious about that too.
Well, I'm against it.
Oh, well, okay. Okay, okay, yes.
I am completely against building on the backs of our taxpayers.
Right.
We get nothing out of it.
Right, it's, well, it's, it doesn't cost the taxpayers anything more. Right, but you're paying, it's the same amount, we can talk later, but it's the same amount that you pay regardless, it's just going to a different bucket. You still the same, pay the same amount, though. We can talk later, but yes, you pay the same amount of money and it just shows up differently on your tax form. But regardless, that's a tool that can be used to develop an area that maybe previously wasn't going to be very attractive to a developer.
So that's what we're doing, making it more attractive to.
Well, this, this, no, not necessarily this, that's something Heather would have to talk to. I'm talking about that's that this is separate than what we're doing here, I think.
I think the other idea is too, like if we have a pre-application meeting with a potential developer and we say, okay, welcome to our city, come on in, great, you want to build this, okay, we're going to want this new sidewalk and we're going to want this new street frontage and we're going to want this. And so that adds the cost to it, whereas using things like urban renewal or having your capital improvement program over time, do some of those street improvements, make sites a little more development ready, reduces the overall costs and then does increase amenities for both the residents, because then the streetscape is in place, but also makes the future development of that lot cheaper. So some of those things are to the benefit of the citizens in general, the residents.
It would seem like downtown core would be it, because the thing, for the people I've been talking to and looking in the other cities, which you know, because you've been to them, Sherwin and stuff, the building model seems to be retail on the bottom, housing on top. That starts to be sweeping a lot of places now, and that would be most obvious on Portland Avenue.
Right, the mixed use dream, right.
Just thinking about who this serves, like I'm really looking at this through the eyes of renters and people who are looking for housing. You know, I'm hearing from my neighbors that they love Gladstone, that they want to build a family here. They don't know if they can afford it. And so looking at this through the eyes of, I'm looking at this of where can we put housing? Like where, what gives us the biggest opportunity to provide affordable housing? So that the people who live here have a place to continue to live here. If their kids want to live here, they have an affordable place and a way to live here as well.
And if I can just steal from some of the mayor's vision that I heard when I first started here in Gladstone, but about those auto retailers who we know are here and we know have invested in our community and we know are good for the tax base, but they might decide to do some type of residential in conjunction with their business at some point. That could, that could happen, and the zoning for mixed use does permit that to happen. So wanting, you know, wanting to keep that that twenty year vision alive, I think is important.
One option, like, because like you say on the river, like to eighty second, that has that riverfront, well, can't build on the parks, Clackamas Drive is already built on. I mean, you got high rocks, where, what river, what?
Well, there you're talking about it more as an amenity unless it's a developable parcel. So it's like saying, hey, we might get more housing here because we've got this amenity nearby. And I think that's an important piece to keep in mind, because all of these options include the amenity of the trolley trail bridge, the future connection, any improvements to Portland Avenue that are forthcoming in your capital improvement plans. So all of those are considered amenities and will draw development into the community and investment. Okay. So in August, we held a public meeting at the community center, fairly well attended. Twenty or so people, twenty five people attended, gave some great feedback. We also hosted an online survey, we received seven responses to that, so a bit of a lower response rate to the online survey. Participants were asked to look at the expanded option one and the option two and give their thoughts. So they thought. Oh, I thought that would just go there. Okay, so option one, the Portland Avenue expanded. Seventeen respondents either liked it or thought it was headed in the right direction, thought it was the most viable. Some comments were thought it, think it's the most viable, best represents our city center, retains current zoning, is well contained. And then the two sort of more negative comments where it should be expanded to include Witten Elementary, and it seems too small. Two people just disliked that option. For option number two, twelve people liked or thought it was headed in the right direction and ten people disliked it. So people felt pretty strongly really about that one. Some thought it seemed to be the most viable, we heard that comment. Interestingly, that exact same comment was written on two different forms for the two different options. So, um, everybody has an opinion and it's interesting that they wrote the exact same thing. Some people thought this provided more flexibility, they would like to see the hole filled on Portland Avenue, which is happening. We've got a permit for that, so that's fantastic. Yes, I saw that they pulled their grading permit, so I was really glad to see that. Um, this area could provide more benefit to more households and provide more space for businesses and our multifamily living. They like that it's connected to the businesses on highway ninety nine. But in the negative category, we're, we heard that parking is bad, that this is too large of a scale and that McLaughlin is not a town center. So those were the comments we heard.
Can, can you tell me again why option three was not considered?
The stakeholder advisory committee decided not to move it forward. We did ask them to focus in and move forward just what they thought were the viable options. So they, as a group, decided to move forward one and two, although there was some support for option three at the stakeholder advisory committee as well.
Okay, and this group could make a decision to put forward option three, even though that wasn't?
Yeah, what we'll be asking you this evening is to talk about all of it and provide feedback to that SAC that'll make the final boundary, a proposal that'll come forward to both bodies and you'll see it again.
Thank you.
Um, so as we said, respondents preferred option one with seventeen responses that they like or thought it was headed in the right direction. Two respondents did not like option one as opposed to ten who didn't like option two. Two respondents wrote in a preference to look east toward eighty second drive for redevelopment potential, AKA option three. So two write-ins for option three, thinking that that would be a better town center option than what was put forward. So we're still kind of where we started with the three options, to be honest. Okay, so here's our opportunity for review and discussion. We have a few prompting questions. There it is. Oh, sorry. Okay, so what we would like to hear from this group and have you discuss amongst yourselves, but also let us know, because we're going to feed this back to the stakeholder advisory committee, which option is the most promising, which gives you the most concern? And then what overall is a feedback we should take back to the stakeholder advisory committee? And I will say that Commissioner Labonte and Mayor Milch have been serving on that committee as well, so they'll be able to support us in bringing back the feedback.
I just had one more thing. Did you guys take any consideration? I didn't see it anywhere in the pack or anything, but you've got, okay, let's start with, okay, Gladstone's, the new pizza place, the mercantile, shaved ice.
Yeah.
The brew. These are people that are deploying their own capital, make downtown better.
Yes.
So any way you think we could help them would be.
Yes, and that's a urban renewal Main Street question too. There's opportunities available through those programs. And anything that was in place as of February or March of this year was taken into consideration in the market feasibility.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I have a couple of comments about the overall designation of a town center regardless of where we put it.
Okay.
One of the things that was stated was it would be well served by transit. I remember when this building was built, they went to Triment to try to get them to run a bus down here because of the court. And Triment wasn't very interested in that at all. So I'm wondering, has any, has Triment been approached on what their contribution would be regardless of the three places, the three choices? That would be number one. And number two is the designation that you should be able to walk and supply your family's needs for products and services. We have a dearth of all those in Gladstone. We have one grocery store. And if I let my feelings be known to the mayor, but if the, if this proposed merger between Kroger and Albertson Safeway goes through, we are at risk of losing a store in Gladstone. And with that is one pharmacy also, which would still leave us with just one. And the grocery store would be if somebody else was to go in there with or without a pharmacy, and the pharmacy would be at the other end of town. And the walkability issue, just, it just, it it's difficult.
Yes.
We don't have the old Norman Rockwell main streets like we, you know, with a grocery store, a drugstore, doctor's office, you know, all the various things that used to make up a main street. So those seem to be things that should be of concern regardless where we go or with which, with which option that we're concerned with.
Yeah, those are both great points, and the the reaching out to Triment piece is really important. And I, Ana Yee is taking notes here, I think we should definitely do that. We've been relying on our metro contacts for that, those conversations, because they're involved in the planning with Triment. But I think at least reaching out to our metro contact who's part of this committee and asking them to reach out to Triment or doing that directly. I think that's an important thing that we need to be doing, especially since you have a history of having requested it. Um, and also with the metro statement that a town center is well served by transit, we know Portland Avenue is part of our town center, so we may need regional support in that argument as well in addition to just saying it from the city side. From the pedestrian side, absolutely, and you know, distance, as you said, it's hard to overcome distance if the pharmacy is on one end of town and the grocery store is on the other. So that is one idea for looking at the narrower scope, because I think the idea is to bring back the Norman Rockwell Main Street. I think the idea is to invest in those areas so that more businesses come in closer.
But to keep those, those types of businesses across the United States, except in maybe in very small rural communities.
Right.
Have have morphed, morphed into a large.
Yes.
Operated by large, basically conglomerates.
Right.
And with minimum amount of locations, considering what they used to have at one point.
So I think I would also like look to your economic development coordinator, like are there outreach opportunities that the city does that when you're talking with businesses trying to court some of those smaller users?
Yeah, that's a really good question, absolutely we do. And it's, it's something that I'm just getting started with, and I really rely on our county partners to help with that. They're the ones who usually reach out to me when somebody, a bigger company or even smaller companies are looking for a place to put their business. But one thing that I've really learned just with my time working with Main Street organizations is that the most impactful businesses to a downtown area and to a core are going to be those started by people who love Gladstone. That's, that's who we need to be courting and who we need to be feeding into is education opportunities and making it easier for people to, and making Gladstone as business friendly as possible so that those people, the people who live here in Gladstone want to actually have a business here in Gladstone, so they feel welcome, included and supported. And I think that's what we're going to see once we start with this revitalization, is more Gladstone residents, especially, you know, we overlook a lot of times younger and older folks who are just primed to put their creativity into practice and put their dreams into practice and starting their own business. So hopefully, I mean, wouldn't it be great if we had a little market on, well, I mean, we have a little market on Portland Avenue, but maybe a grocery store on, near Portland Avenue.
But I wanted to add to the comment I made the other night. A lot of our businesses are really two businesses at one. It's a commercial property owned by an investor owner who rents it to someone who operates a business there. So we really have two needs that we're trying to address at the same time. And we've had properties on Portland Avenue that sat either unused or underutilized for a long time because the owner didn't want to invest in improvements required to make them inhabitable. So the pizza place that we had before couldn't operate because there were mold issues. And finally, I think the owner of that property said, okay, I'll fix that. All of a sudden, right away, we got another owner of a pizza business. We had a building that sat unused because the parking requirements would have made it, as you're, to use your, not pencil out. The owner of that property wanted to do a commercial on the ground floor and housing above. But if you had to put, what, eleven, fourteen parking spaces? And maybe you could go and get a variance and get it down to eleven, that would still use so much of the land that you couldn't make a profit by renting it out. Once we removed the parking requirements, that piece of property got, got snatched up right away. So the difference between four years ago and now is that the zoning changes have made these properties much more attractive. And a lot of the owners who own the properties, uh, who were reluctant to let anything be developed and the market, the mercantile property is another one that kind of sat unused for a while. And all of a sudden, they said, you know, now's the time to invest again in this again and seek someone who wants to operate a business out of here. So don't always assume that whoever runs the business owns the piece of property. That in in Gladstone is often, you know, less often the case, I think. But we have to, we have to be sure that we are addressing the needs of both of these business types. The property owner who wants to rent or or eventually sell their their property and the business owner who wants to seek a location to put a property to to operate a business out of.
Yeah, I will, I will say, you know, as we're discussing the different options, I think the only one that I'm like firmly not excited about is option one that is limited to Portland Avenue, simply because when I opened my business, I started a business that last year that just opened, we're coming up on a year anniversary. And I started in Gladstone, I looked for a home for my business in Gladstone, I walked up and down Portland Avenue, looking in windows and knocking on doors and trying to figure out who empty, but empty buildings belong to. And there really just is a dearth of opportunities for business owners to have a place to grow their business in Gladstone. So I'll throw it out there that I'm in favor of preferably option three or option two, but an area where we're expanding that scope so that we have more opportunities to create opportunities for business owners and for residents.
I don't disagree with you. I would, I would just add to the conversation that some of the conversation we have at Planning Commission, I think the last time that this group was together was about how do we continue to like kind of keep our hands on the rein of the city and continue some of that control here at this decision-making level and not delegate some of the authority, I think to the earlier part of the conversation, to the state or the legislature to make decisions how we use our town center or our land.
I was just going to confirm that I did go online and should the merger go through, Safeway, the one that we have, is on the slates to be closed. But also what I wanted to say was I want us to kind of dive not deep, well, yeah, dig a little deeper in the sense of if we designate certain areas for, for this, what are the benefits to the city and the residents? What are the downfalls in the sense that if we make a very large area, does that mean developers can come in and bulldoze houses down and change things dramatically? And we have no control over what happens to our city? I want to, I want some answers to some of those things. Because that's important to me in the sense that everybody's going to have a different opinion, but we also have to think about what are the benefits by doing this? And if there aren't a whole lot of benefits, then why would we designate a very large scale area to do this? So I have some questions about that kind of stuff.
Sure.
Indeed, how much, I guess what I'm saying is, talk, let's talk about the money. Is this going to benefit the developers or is it going to develop, is it going to benefit our citizens in our city?
So ideally, it would be both, right? Because you would get to determine what. Because you would get to determine what regulations apply in this boundary. And then, so those can be right-sized to Gladstone, right? If you want to keep it at middle housing and you don't want to look at expanding into smaller scale multifamily housing on the R five lots, or if you want to do that in just certain areas. You know, that's the next step in this discussion and you have ultimate say over that right now. To Commissioner Wies's point, I haven't heard that there's anybody else looking to make changes to that. But a lot has changed in state law in the last few years, so I certainly wouldn't make any promises. As far as who it benefits, though, I think the idea is that you make this development friendly. Like the mayor said, we've done with some of our downtown zoning. And then as that happens, we do require you to put in public improvements. We do require you to pay system development charges. We do require things to go to the city so that it benefits all residents and property owners and business owners in Gladstone. We do have urban renewal. We do have a Main Street program. So we have these things in place that as more people pay into the system, those coffers get larger. And we can do more things like streetscape design, adding sidewalks, adding amenities. The, the Trolley Trail Bridge is a huge regional project, but Gladstone's at the table, you know, doing their part to make sure that that happens. So, you know, moving forward, those efforts, I'm sure city investment is needed for that. Yeah, that, I think the idea is to, to make everyone's, rise all boats, right? Lift the tide to rise all the boats, let the developers have development potential, make a project that pencils out. But then also see some investment and development that can benefit people who are here and who are coming here.
I would also add that likely the size of the boundary would also correlate with maybe how much redevelopment potential there could be or could be captured. So likely an option that has more acreage probably also has more opportunity. Yeah, just something to consider in terms of housing redevelopment, commercial redevelopment. And then as you have larger areas that, you know, are more easily redevelopable for housing, then you are also increasing the need and the demand for commercial services as well. So that's kind of speaks to the rising of all boats at the same time that Heather was commenting on.
If, when we do set these boundaries, will it enable us to apply for more grants to do more things for our city to improve it? So it brings in money?
It could, it could.
From the state and the federal level is what I'm asking?
I don't think federal necessarily. That's more, that would be more highway projects and things like that. But I would say that once you've designated a town center, which is a metro designation and also a climate-friendly area, which is a state designation, that you probably would be eligible for certain pools of money that are specific to those types of areas. The climate-friendly area is so new that I don't know of many people who've established it and are now looking to, you know, apply for grants for it. They're still, the state is still funding people establishing the areas. So I don't know.
I, yeah, I would assume that once we are through the phase of establishing CFAs throughout the state, we will see funding for implementation pieces. That might not be something that we see for the next five to eight years. But yeah, if we're establishing geographic boundaries, I would assume that cities are gonna start asking for funding to implement.
Like funding that could go towards improving, enhancing our city infrastructure for water, stormwater and sewage?
Pot- potentially, yeah, especially if you are trying to do those things to court new development and more opportunities for economic development and residential. There certainly are grants and, and you mentioned federal grants and that is, you know, for wastewater and things like that. There definitely are opportunities at a larger scale. But yeah, potentially.
I mean, I would say connecting to the broader state conversation around that. I mean, the governor was recently, in the last legislative session, they were talking about, you know, they have this mandate for housing and cities need money for infrastructure. So that is a huge part of the legislation that was passed this past spring. You know, I don't know about how it's getting dispersed and things like that. But I, I mean, in terms of the trend of that conversation, it's heading in that direction.
Okay, that, that would be a benefit to our city.
Well, I'll add to that. Infrastructure money right now is pinpointed towards communities who do not have any or are in dire need of. What ours would be is replacement and or upgraded. That's a totally different pocket of money. And that's not where the, the major amount of state and federal money is going right now.
I want to respond to Commissioner Reese because I had the same thought about the last time we met as a joint, in a joint work session. We were talking about the parking regulations. We knew that the area a half a mile east and west of McLaughlin would have no parking mandates. And we had an option to just say, let's just have no parking mandates citywide. And we chose not to do that. We wanted to have some control of some areas where we could establish different policies that would incentivize certain types of development or certain types of, you know, the way the land was used that would help the city and not just give it over to say, do whatever you want, you know, we trust the market. So, but at the same time that we've said that, my feeling is that what makes an area more climate friendly is less reliance on automobiles. Not that we ban automobiles, but you don't, you don't have to use an automobile. And, and what makes you less reliant on an automobile is being in close proximity to the amenities and the services that you really like. And for most people, the main amenity that you use on a regular basis is your grocery store. And so I, I'm concerned that, that divestiture of a store in order to do a merger. And, and the list you've seen online is not stores that would close, but stores that would be sold to another wholesaler that could operate it. But one which happens to be pretty inexperienced at operating stores in this region and might not be successful and might ultimately fail. And that's where the closing could be a possibility. But I know if you go online for, you know, and look up an area and try to find a walkability score for a region, a lot of how they measure that is how close are you to the main amenities that, that people need in their lives, which includes a grocery store? And if there are other amenities that people would like to have, like a hardware store or a bakery or other things, the more commercial property you have in close proximity to residential property, the more likely you are to be able to create a region which has good proximity to amenities that people favor and therefore give you an opportunity to, to walk to the store rather than always having to drive. Or, you know, a, a business that would do local deliveries. When you started your bookstore in Gladstone, you actually delivered books. I'm talking to, to Cazler Cook, you delivered books on bicycle because it, it was, it was within distance of, of where you were operating from. So those kinds of businesses which reduce your reliance on the automobile are climate friendly to my mind. I, I like option number three, but I would tweak it. If, if we have to go a quarter of a mile beyond that boundary with, with no parking minimums, I would almost wish, could you go back to the map of, of number three? I almost wish we could do an option three where that top purple line was about two or three blocks south of where it is now. So that the focus was on the purple area to the right and the left. And the housing that comes maybe up to, I don't know if it would be Dartmouth Street, but yeah, sort of south of the elementary. So now somebody said having the elementary school in it would encourage more property development. But I think there's already a lot of, of homes, medium density sized homes there. And the kind of development that we're seeing is not people putting in new homes as much as converting existing properties to duplexes, triplexes, adding ADUs. It's not outside developers, it's local property owners saying, I'm gonna expand my own property, get the maximum use out of this property that I own now because that will enable my, my teenager to live here when he or she is a college student, or my elderly parent to live here and provide childcare for my children when we're ready to have a family. Or those kinds of needs that would benefit. But if we move that boundary down to, say, Portland Avenue, then the area a quarter mile north of that would still be.
You mean Dart.
Uh, Dartmouth, yeah, Dartmouth Avenue or Dartmouth Street. The area a quarter mile above that would get that light blue tone like you did on that other map. But we wouldn't have to go a quarter mile above whatever that street is there now. I don't know if that's Hereford or, or what that northern boundary was. Because then I think we'd be giving away some of what Commissioner Reese was talking about before, some of that control that we wanted to have. But I, I, I couldn't tell you the names of very many of the businesses in that purple area to the lower right other than the grocery store and the, and the Harley Place and the McDonald's up there. But that, that very lower corner of businesses that are along the river, I think that's tremendous potential for, for more of the kinds of businesses that people want to have access to in their local community. So they don't have to give in their car and drive to Milwaukee or Oregon City to find those. And so that's where I would like to see us focus on, on trying to get some of the commercial development that would benefit people. There are businesses in that area that I, I wish weren't there and I won't name them. But some of them don't seem terribly attractive and they don't seem focused on the day-to-day needs that people have. But, you know, what you want is destinations. Destinations are what make an area attractive, what make it feel affordable. Because if you can reduce your transportation budget, you can reduce the cost of your, of living. So I'll, I've said enough. I'll, I'll let other people.
If I, if I'm, oh.
I wa- I want to know why the, you were in the group. Why didn't the group put option three forward? Is it just because it was their number three choice? And the reason that I ask is I never want to dismiss what our, what our groups are saying. What, they've spent time doing this and you're in that group. Why didn't they bring forward three?
Well, actually, I wasn't part of the group. I did monitor, I monitored.
I am.
Two of the meetings.
I'm sorry, I thought I was told you and.
Yeah, I, I tried to monitor some of their things and see what they said, but I didn't try to interfere. A lot of them, a lot of the people in that group are people who have business interests on Portland Avenue. So, you know, and, and actually the Portland, Portland Avenue area is included in all three of those. But there may have been an objection to including an area that would have businesses that might be seen as competing with Portland Avenue. But I can't say for sure.
Yeah, that would absolutely not be the case. What I can say is our biggest concern was really the parking piece of this across the board, which I think has been kind of, you know, glazed over in some sense where there, you know, there's no request for off-street, rather for on, off-street parking with a lot of this development, if I'm correct on that still. So really, that committee was looking at, in, in a big way, that was a, a huge sticking point for trying to kind of reduce the size of this. With the idea and kind of the fear that you're gonna have higher density housing and almost like the worst-case scenario for parking here for Portland Ave and Gladstone where we don't have a Trimet, you know, great service. We don't have a trolley or, you know, we, we. Portland Ave is kind of in the middle of this whole thing. We don't have great transportation. The, I love the idea of walkability. Heck of a lot of people live near the supermarket. I don't see many people walking over there to get their groceries necessarily. And I think that's one thing. And we talked about walkability and that's great. But one big issue, and we came up in planning last time, one of these meetings, was regarding ADA accessibility and how these parking regulations impact that community, which is significant. And I, I'd love for that to be more of a conversation that comes up as we go through this. And I think that's, yeah. So a couple of things on that, the walkability. So, you know, the climate friendly, I get the idea of it. We're, we're walking more, we're not driving as much. But, you know, building houses and building is, you know, we're using resources there. If we're have, we talk about conservation, that's great. But if we have more units, in the long run, we're using more electricity. So is, I, I try to be mindful with a lot of these things as seven-year-old Andrew. When I saw a commercial on TV for a toy, and I was like, the coolest toy, and I go to the store, it's shiny, it's new. But perhaps you've been in the situation, you get home and you play with it and you're like, oh, this, this isn't so great, or it kind of broke, or you forget about it. And I think about that a lot with this plan and how it's gone from the 2017 plan for downtown into escalating into this. I mean, we've talked about parking all along as a big contentious point. And now it's like, well, whatever, you can park wherever you want. And it's, it's just kind of crazy to me. So long-winded, but the parking, I think, is a huge part of it, to your question about the committee. That was a, a huge concern that we're gonna have these higher density units coming in. We're not gonna have parking. We see it, what happens. And so would we go to Foster, go to these places? I think a lot of that is the, you know, the vision of folks that might be outside of Gladstone. And what makes Gladstone special, in my opinion, is that we live here because it's Gladstone. It's, it's a small-town feeling. I've never met a person who's come to Gladstone to say, man, I wish it was more like Portland here. Man, I wish it was more like, you, you know, you name it. And I think that what in the long run, twenty years out, what might be our gem is the bet, the, the better that we can hold on to that character, that small-town feel, in the long run, I think will pay dividends. I just want to mention that, but the parking is a huge concern for the committee for sure. Thank you.
I have a question for Councilor Cook. If Portland Avenue had had the same type of parking that downtown Milwaukee has, which is that pull-in, lots of parking, really visible pulling in and out, would that have been more attractive to you as a business owner?
So, as a business owner, and it's a good question because Milwaukee has, you know, my, my business is located in downtown Milwaukee. We do have parking limitations, so it's, it's block parking only, two-hour limit. I, I think when you're talking about parking, you have to balance is, do you have enough parking versus do you have somewhere people want to go? So we have a lot of parking in downtown Milwaukee, but in part, it's because all these buildings are vacant. Like, there are a ton of open vacancies in downtown Milwaukee. You know, you, I would much rather see, I would love to see challenging parking in downtown Milwaukee because it means people are going there. It means we're getting street. It means we're getting foot traffic. I, I think we really have to balance, again, making space for people versus cars. And my concern with parking mandates is that we're requiring businesses to subsidize the cost of storing private vehicles for people who are shopping in that area. When, you know, it may be in the best interest of the business and the customer who's shopping there to have more of a place to go versus private vehicle storage to get there. You know, I, you know, we talk about Selwood or other neighborhoods as well. You know, I, I go to Selwood to shop and, you know, have a nightlife and stuff. And, you know, I walk a block and it's fine. You know, if anyone has a Costco membership, you park, you, right? How far away do you park in a Costco? And you walk because you know you want to go to Costco and you have to, you know, hike all that stuff back with you. So I think my personal feeling as a counselor, as someone who lives in Gladstone, as someone who's a business owner, is you have to have a place that someone wants to go. And it doesn't matter how much parking you have if nobody's going there. There's nowhere for people to, to go. Sorry. No, no, it's okay. So I go to Selwood and I go to other neighborhoods that are surrounding, right, to visit. I don't see many people from Selwood coming to Gladstone to, you know, visit the amenities that we have here outside of perhaps our parks. I'd like to have us see a bang and barbecue joint and, you know, some places for people to go and really drive that traffic. And personally, I, I see parking as less of a concern.
Yeah, I, I just, I think as someone who visits Selwood and, and walks a block in to see something, that's one thing. But the person that lives there that is now parking a block or two out because a, a bunch of Sierras were in the neighborhood that evening and now has to walk to their own house with their groceries, that's what we consider.
It's all competing, it's all competing priorities, right? So, you know, I was lucky enough to, to buy a home and establish my family in Gladstone. And I am grateful every day that I was able to find this community for my family. But I don't want to pull up the drawbridge and say, that's it, I'm here. Nobody else, you know, everybody who got here gets this beautiful Norman Rockwell community. But I don't want anyone else to come in and enjoy that. That's, that's not the case. I want everybody to discover Gladstone and have a place here and have a physical place here. And part of that means making less space for cars, in my opinion.
May I ask how bike lanes will, I know a problem that a lot of communities are running into, especially with this parking situation, is you have bike lanes that are popping up on streets where all of a sudden folks can't park or have company park or have a friend park. Is that something that, in this boundary, that we're gonna run into?
So I, um, I.
So I, um, I, I can't say that I'm really up to speed on what the plan is for the streetscapes. Except that in the downtown revitalization plan, it had parallel parking and bike lanes. So both were included in that streetscape and I don't know if anything's changed since that in the planning.
So does that go to, I guess, uh, to Jacob's question, the, um, is that something that could, you know, be changed? Could there be like some outside plan that comes in and says, well, you must do this because you're in this, this area in this boundary and?
Sure, I mean, a- anything could happen, right? So I, I don't think that's on the horizon. We haven't heard that happening. But I mean, we work in a lot of communities where there's like a bike advocacy group and like they're at every conversation we have. And so there's always that, at the front of the discussion. Not so much the case here in Gladstone, but some planning's been done for cycling facilities and for those. And, and bicycling is considered a, um, a valid transportation option to get you out of your car. In some ways, better than pedestrian if you do have those long distances pharmacy to grocery store. Maybe you could do a bicycle trip in a way that you really couldn't fit the time and the, you know, sidewalk connectivity and safety and things like that on foot. So, um, yeah, so it's a piece of the puzzle. But I haven't heard it's something coming from the state that we have to look at specifically.
I guess, just my concern was that we would lose parking to, more parking to bike lanes.
Well, we already have bike lanes and parking in the plans, so they're both in there. So I don't think that there's a risk that it goes beyond that on Portland Avenue.
And I'm, I'm speaking for the boundary.
Oh, okay. Right, because we don't right now have our local street with bike lanes. And if all of a sudden everything in the town center had to have bike lanes or something like that. I don't know. I guess, possible, possible. But I will say too, that town centers have been around for a long time. Now, some communities have had a town center over 20 years. And so this is not a new concept and things have not happened like that in that time period, but.
But statewide requirement for CFA is new.
CFA is new. We've been required to have a town center. I don't really know the history of why Gladstone doesn't have a town center. But when I started here two years ago, it was, okay, we've gotta do this climate-friendly area. Oh, hey, great. It counts as our town center too. Let's try to get some money for this and knock it all out. So that's where I came in and that's what we're doing. Any other, so we've heard from a few commissioners on, and counselors on their preferred option or maybe their dis-preferred option. Anyone we haven't heard from?
I have a question. Um, well, I, obviously there's a lot of thought put together in each of these options. I'm curious on option one. Obviously, I, I like option one because we've put a lot of thought in code amendments and overlays into bringing in a lot of attention and hopefully, you know, influence and, you know, just love for this area. Is there a possibility of, um, pushing that western border to incorporate additional residential? So we incorporate, we, we capture that downtown core. But then we are also able to capture a little bit additional residential. So we're able to kind of, you know, two birds, one stone. But then, yeah, I'm thinking just like additional on the west side so that. Yeah, towards McLaughlin so that, you know, we're.
Which one was?
This one here. Yeah, one for that downtown, but then.
Had, had just a couple blocks toward McLaughlin instead of all the way to McLaughlin.
Right, exactly. That way we're capturing a little bit additional residential, um, without extending.
So maybe to Beatrice or even Barton, but.
Right, and that way we're able to control more of, you know, the parking that the last time we were all here together, we have been trying to, you know, protect a little bit.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I think all boundary expansions and contractions and adjustments are on the table for you to discuss and for you to feed back to SAC. Uh, Commissioner Mercer?
I, I've been wanting to add some comments.
They glued it down.
Boundary one. If you look at boundary one, which is Portland Avenue. Where is the new police station? Where is the revised new fire station? Where is the new library? Where is the new city center? Where is the new public works? Majority of what's new has been put on the books with a lot of work, I'm sure, from our city administrator, Jackie. But it seems to me we've got everything in that option one. And can we make it better like you're suggesting? With going one way or the other, making it a little bit bigger, maybe? But the city is, even though it's probably 12 square miles or whatever, it is majority of it's ranging option one.
Great, great point that we already have invested a lot as a community in option one or expanded option one. And so keeping that energy and that focus into option one, um, is important.
That's what I was saying about the people that are already deployed all their capital on Portland Avenue. That's where they put it all. What, are you just trying to get a consensus tonight? Like go around and find out what?
Not even a consensus, just feedback that we can take to your SAC. Because ultimately we'll ask them to put forward a draft boundary. And then we'll bring it back to this group with some ideas on some zoning code changes and things that we might be thinking about. And then we'll have another one of these in three months or so.
Because then I like option one with Jennifer's idea. That's the best for me so far in terms.
To Commissioner Smith's point of, um, pros and cons. I'd like to see more of a pros and cons kind of, uh, thing laid out. Which I'm sure would be expanded on with various groups. Uh, so folks can really see kinda, what are we getting from this and what are we giving?
I think that was what the original SAC analysis of the three boundaries and what the land use implications are and what the market analysis shows and what the displacement, um, measures might be. That was, that was the sort of comparison of what differences there might be or some similarities, I think. Otherwise, to the questions of what might happen, I, those are all equal, right? You determine your town center boundary and then whatever happens, happens equally.
I guess what I'm saying, whatever the plan is, what are the pros and the cons of whatever plan? Again, it's all in there, but let's say I'm talking to my neighbor.
Simplistic details about what this is going to actually entail.
I misinterpreted your question. Yeah, no, no. Um, so whatever boundary the SAC moves forward, then the, um, market analysis is updated to specifically focus on that boundary and go into more detail. So Echo Northwest is still on the contract to relook at whatever our ultimate boundary is and add more of that information, for sure.
Does our boundary have to be continuous?
Yeah, okay. I, I believe so because you're really talking about a, a center. So you don't want little nodes. That's a different planning tool, sort of, yeah.
I have to agree, uh, that Commissioner Volveta's suggestion is great, but you should probably consider doing that for the other side as well. On the east side, add a couple of extra blocks. Yeah, it would be uniformed.
The parking question will come. I think any growth of that would be met with some resistance with the community in general, but, uh, with the stakeholder group too. But, you know, it'd be interesting to see.
So, um, to, to just point that out, we'd be talking about, um, coming down here and maybe coming along or maybe even including this little triangle and coming along Beatrice on this side and then, um, kind of. Right, we're already marked on Chicago. So we're already talking about going to the end of the block here. So going one more block would be Harvard.
And so like extrapolating out like a future state, potentially there could be a new zoning district similar to what we did with downtown core overlay. We'd now have town center. Town center overlay. And potentially, one of the things that you mentioned is allowing not just fourplexes, but on a 10,000 square foot lot, like eight or small apartment complexes on those.
It's an option.
So that's one of the things, because we're looking at primarily residential spaces here. Not including like the option three with the commercial stuff. So should we be envisioning that any expansion, we're expanding the area of, that could potentially be redeveloped into small complexes or other?
I would say yes, with the caveat that sometimes you get sub areas. So like Sherwood's downtown has two sub areas. They have the old cannery and the old town. And they have different regulations for their two different areas that are within there. So you could do it that way. I would, I'm not sure with this small of a geographic area that that would be worth looking at or if, um, if, or if it would be necessary. And, and the homogenous zoning here, right? So all of our residential is, um, R5. We don't have any of our, our 7.2, our low-density or even any of our MR, our multi-household. We're really, um, we're really talking about some pretty like standards that are already applicable to these areas. So I wouldn't necessarily envision a lot of different things in different areas of this. So I think I would consider it to be all one, but haven't thought that far ahead, really.
Okay, and we could designate a very small boundary for the town center. But as we do recodification and overlays, we could potentially apply an overlay or a carbon copy of that overlay to a broader area. So for example, if we wanted areas of Arlington-Clackamas River Road towards Safeway to have some allowances similar to what we're doing in town center.
Without the parking issue, but have some, you could, you could rewrite some portions of your development code that are not applicable to town center. Sure, absolutely, you could do that. One thing I would say about a really small town center boundary, and we don't have a really small one here, I feel comfortable with what we're putting forward though, is when we get to the point of moving it forward to adopt it, we will have to make findings like that it does serve those tens of thousands of people. And it does serve people within two to three miles. And we are meeting those, those goals and those standards. So I know it's very subjective, but that would be my only word of caution about considering anything smaller than what we're already looking at.
Thank you.
Want to add one more thing. In looking at this map even more, I wonder if just going with option one, it removes the people that are doing a lot of development on Arlington. And that concerns me a little bit because I don't want to downplay where people are putting the biggest investment. And right now, that's where it kind of seems to be when I hear Arlington and McLaughlin. Because I've seen a lot of upgrades like everyone else has seen within, you know, some of the car dealerships. But we've also seen a lot of really nice buildings go up in our, on Arlington. And I, you know, without making some big ol' U-turn so that we're not upsetting the apple core of our homeowners within downtown Gladstone. And I, 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 you know, just that area. Just talking out loud, just talking out loud to wonder that we're, to make sure that we're not excluding areas.
So potentially some sort of L shape that includes Arlington to McLaughlin?
Or potentially, if, if the goal is to include as many potentially developable, developable commercial spaces as possible while excluding residential, potentially an upside-down T shape where we're including Portland Avenue as the center to the left going Arlington to McLaughlin and to the right, including the Safeway Center, which is my area of deepest concern. I feel like that's the area of greatest opportunity, right? Portland Avenue, you can't, you can't squeeze much more in there. I feel like there's opportunity near Safeway that there just isn't downtown. But potentially by doing an upside-down T, we can allay parking concerns while still including commercial spaces. I like.
Yeah, because I really, I, I hear where you're going and I really like it. Because when I drive up and down Arlington, I look at new, old, new, old. And I think there's so much potential to bring it all together without putting a four-building high-rise behind, you know, Grandma Richard's home in the middle of downtown, in the middle of this area. Only because I, I've seen what's a, a high-rise does to somebody's backyard. And it, it's not pretty. It's, it's kind of sad sometimes.
To that note, you, you can do things like buffers and requirements with adjacency. So if you're wanting to build, you know, four stories, but even three and you're adjacent to a one-story, you have to set it back further or do other things. There can, there are.
Have you been up to that cul-de-sac there off of, uh, oat field where the apartment complex with their bright lights are right behind their homes? Or you go down oat field and there's, or you go down Glen Echo and there's the housing development that just went in with sidewalks on one side. That's not very walkable. And there's parking, there's no parking. It is wall-to-wall cars everywhere on that street. So there, none of them are using one car. It's just, and I'm not saying anything bad about it. It just is what it is. And you, you can't change it.
May, so, so am I correct in, in what I took from the conversation earlier? That we still have, or we, the council, whomever, will at some point then make the requirements for what types of buildings can go in? My sense is that there's like, um, this idea that we're just throwing our hands up and all these big buildings are gonna come in. But the, the reality is that we will work together, um, and come up with the building code that will fit this community. So that those situations maybe don't happen.
At the same time, like Mr. Wee said, how do we know we're not gonna designate that area? And the state's gonna come back and say, well, here's what we're gonna tell you now. You've made this space and this is what you're gonna have to do with it. And as we all know, when the state mandates something, you have no choice. That, it, it's just, it, that's what it is.
Which is why I think we wanna hold on to some of that control that we worked so hard to maintain last time, you know? Try to keep that boundary.
Smaller the boundary, I think the safer we are.
I, I want to add too, that, that one of the comments in terms of advantages of some of these areas was that Portland Avenue, um, a lot of Portland Avenue business owners will say they feel invisible to the surrounding community. Because even downtown Oregon City, you can sort of see from 99 as you're driving through. But Portland Avenue, if you didn't have a sign that told you there was a business there and you were driving by the car dealerships on McLaughlin, you wouldn't know. So if we did a focus on extending it out Arlington to the west, uh, to where some of those businesses are and Arlington to the east closer to the grocery store. The advantage that was pointed out for option three was that's the one that connects most to the freeway. So if you're talking about, um, development that will appeal and serve people who live in, you know, tens of thousands of people, you're talking about people up on the oat field side, uh, up on both sides of 205 to the north of us, who may come to Gladstone for, uh, anything that, that was in those areas. And because you can get there very accessibly from the freeway on one side and from 99 on the other side, then that kind of, that, that inverted T shape or, uh, an inverted T that extended a little bit up and then out of their purple area, you know, it's, it's. And, and then, and then the smaller, the smaller area, the, the less you have of the residential, the less you have of a, of a top boundary. Then that quarter of a mile beyond doesn't extend as much. So the vicinity in, uh, most of the upper right-hand corner of this drawing here, that's all still under parking minimum requirements. And, um, we could, we could set some rules there that would make sure that we didn't, uh, uh, you know, give away too much free, free land for just parking. You know, that we, that we had some control over that.
I, I do kind of like the idea of considering the entire bottom part of that inverted T with a tail. As our potential area for overlay, but maintaining the smaller area with the smaller parking requirement for the town center designation. Because we could apply that same desert, we could apply the same recodification, the same overlay to all of that in that corridor. I think to your point, along Arlington, it really is a, a great part of the city in connecting Portland Avenue. to Safeway and the businesses near Safeway is, it is going to be even more possible as we get the, uh, bridge area, uh, redeveloped right there and attaching us to McLaughlin. But I, I guess my, my proposition would be to keep the town center designation small, but consider all of that area that we're discussing for the recodification and the outcomes of the exercises that start with designating the town center.
And I think it, it also has the advantage of being able to, uh, to do what Commissioner Labonte referred to earlier. The lack of, well, there is, there is public transit on Arlington and on Dartmouth and on Portland Avenue. We have five or six different bus routes that serve Gladstone. So we have public transit. But transit specific to those areas could be served by a little trolley on wheels that somebody could operate or shuttle buses or something. And we have plenty of parking here at the, at the civic center, at the high school, at the Gladstone Christian Church, in the parking lots of the commercial buildings to the east of us near Safeway that, you know, where you could have a shuttle bus that would start there and take people into your booming downtown area once that gets going. So, uh, there are a lot of options for privately operated shuttle transit, uh, you know, service that could be done that would ease any concerns that people had about finding a parking spot in front of the business they want to go to. Uh, but, uh, you know, getting somewhere, uh, more easily. Uh, I look at Sandy and other communities that have those little buses, Independence. What's the other sitting next to them, uh, that, um, starts with an M and I can never? Monmouth, yeah. They have, they have these little trolleys on wheels that, that take you for maybe a one dollar fee or something up and down the street. You can see the whole thing. And you don't ever have to worry about parking because you start somewhere where there's a lot of parking and go to the places where there's not so much.
And I can envision that with the, um, putting up the new trolley trail bridge that people could come to Gladstone, have lunch, get on the trolley and go see the falls.
Yeah, yeah.
And walk up and down Arlington and, and meet up with Portland Avenue. And I think all of that. You know, I think it's important that, I mean, it's, it's really awesome sometimes to look big, but it's also, we also have to keep in mind what, with what we're able to do. And I think that not by, and I don't mean by staying small, but by staying a little bit more, uh, conservative, that we really put a lot of effort into an area that everyone can see and everyone uses. That, that would be my hope. One thing I was going to ask, if anybody knows, where is on that map? Does anybody know specifically where the, the golden wrench is? I don't know why I'm not figuring it out.
It's up by Safeway. It's across the street from where the merchant bank used to be.
Well, I know that, but where is it? Is it that first, uh, mauve area or is it further up?
Yeah, which is Arlington?
Arlington is, uh, here.
Right.
So wherever the Safeway is, it's directly across the street from the Safeway.
Oh, you're right. Okay. I'm just not seeing it.
Yeah.
It's just off the map, I think.
Did boundary number three include more area on that side? Uh, your boundary three, is it, does it include a little more purple?
Let's see.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So I think the, the sort of angled white, is that, uh?
Eighty second.
Is that eighty second then?
Oh, this guy?
No, no. Right from that little, yeah.
Yes.
That, okay.
That's the flag. Okay. Yeah, I like that idea.
So just again, that'd be like coming down, excuse me, coming down to Berkeley because that would encompass Arlington.
Right.
And running this way and then across to McLaughlin on Berkeley and then coming back up.
And I'm, I'm all about keeping in the, I call it bowling alley property. I know.
Where Walgreens is, correct?
Yeah. Okay, on McLaughlin.
Yeah.
Going all the way to McLaughlin.
All that in there. And I think it's important that we include, you know, our river areas so that if there's potential investment possibilities, that we don't overlook the fact that lots of people use those park areas as walkways. And that come, brings in that walkability. Um, I think that's important, you know, for those that walk their wagons down.
For a lot of people, that's the safest place to park is those areas that are away from the cars. And so the parks right along the river, which is why the advantage of including as much riverfront property as possible. Uh, because it, it does also become, uh, safe, walkable, separated areas.
Okay, great. Um, I think we've.
Yeah, I was.
Commissioner Arlington.
Agree. Um, I, I just don't think option one is enough. And, uh, and those are absolutely great opportunities down there in each corner. And we'll, I, you know, people can do things on there that, looking at our downtown center, I, I just don't think anybody's realizing how small those lots are. You know, everybody's worried about a big building, but, you know, you're not going to get much on those little slivers, so.
And many of them are still home.
Yeah, exactly. So.
A good example is the one business that came before the planning commission where they did two stories. And they're, they're actually going to tear down the house next to it to expand.
Yeah.
And it's right on Arlington. Um, those were excellent suggestions because that's, Arlington is a thoroughfare. There's more commercial on, from one end to the other of Arlington. But there's more opportunity if there's, if there's going to be some development. And the bus line on Arlington is excellent. Cause it's not so good on Dartmouth.
Or Glen Echo.
Um, I think this is great feedback. I think we've got the T option, the Portland Avenue expanded, um, toward McLaughlin to incorporate some, um, some more residential. We've got the concerns with parking and, um, a couple of preferences for option one, um, and potentially option one with also development code updates in other areas. All great feedback. I guess, uh, Counselor Cook, you were not excited about one, but liked maybe two or three. Are you hearing some hybrid things that you also sort of support just to?
Oh, yeah. Yes, absolutely. I am all for inverted T.
Okay.
Team inverted T, okay. I think it maximizes our opportunity for potential resources while minimizing parking concerns in residential areas.
Okay, excellent. Okay.
I've got one question with Jennifer's, um, suggestion and mine doing the other half. Would we still need to do that if we have the T on Arlington?
Can you repeat the question again? I'm sorry.
Well, we had, she made the suggestion about expanding it over like two.
Oh.
And I made the suggestion, well, we should do it on the other side too. I mean, do, if we're going to do the, the T idea, do we need to still have that expanded?
I think these are two different ideas to move forward to the SAC because one really expands the residential redevelopment potential and the other is kind of more focused on commercial. So I think they're kind of two different ideas, um, if I'm clear, getting that correctly. Um, with still knowing that parking is a concern and potential, you know, um, other levels of government having an impact also being something that we want to keep in mind, um, when we designate our town center area. Okay, I work very close to our two hour mark. So I want to be respectful of everybody's time. I just have a couple more slides about what comes next. As soon as I get this guy going. There it is. Okay.
You ruined us with the rhino.
I know, I'm sorry. I saw it with this. I know, that's, I can't unsee it.
We need that.
Maybe we do need to. That could be the town center logo, maybe. Okay, so we do have the next SAC meeting coming up here in October. It was originally scheduled for October fourteenth, but we have a, um, almost all-day Indigenous people celebration here at the city. So we moved that to the twenty first. Um, we're going to be doing that online. Um, I believe it's at two PM. Uh, once that final boundary is, um, not determined might be the wrong word, but recommended by the SAC, then Echo Northwest is going to u- update the market analysis for that specific geographic area, um, as well as the displacement risk and anti-displacement measures. Um, I don't have it up on my computer anywhere, sorry. Um, so then we will be looking at what kind of updates to the comprehensive plan, the zoning code and the zoning map that need to accompany that new boundary. Um, I envision at about the time that we're thinking about those concepts for code and not quite drafting it yet, that's when we'll be looking to meet with this group again, um, probably about three months, sometime in winter when we have the next SAC recommendation. We'll probably have two SAC meetings before we meet with you, the one where they sort of determine their boundary. And then we go back and do the market analysis and come up with some of those code concepts, get their take on that and then bring that back to you. And then through later winter, early spring, we'll be drafting that code and bringing that forward through the hearings processes. In addition to that, we have the parking package that went to Planning Commission last week and is coming forward to you, city counselors, next week for your meeting on October eighth. So also part of this project, but sort of on a separate timeline. Um, any final thoughts or questions?
Thank you for letting us talk out loud.
You're so welcome. This has been a great discussion. I really appreciate it.
This work session has been, um, what's the word I'm looking for? I worked for somebody who would do these kind of things. And it's like when you can get a group of people together and get, get ideas. It's just, it's almost magical. So I think this was an excellent work session.
And I'll add, it, one of the nice things is, you know, and I watched Planning Commission last week deal with some issues related to some of the zoning and housing and stuff. Uh, when we hear each other's ideas and sometimes an idea will come up among, in one group that you wouldn't have thought of at another place, boy, it sure helps put things in, in perspective. So, uh, this, you know, I, I like drawing on the things I hear in a variety of settings because it helps, uh, give us the big picture much more clearly. Uh, all those, those clear and objective standards on ADU stuff that, you know, we're going to have to struggle with that. But, but I'm glad that the Planning Commission looked at that, felt the need to, to pull that out and give it more thought because that will help us look at it with the same kind of care, uh, as, as, you know, as we, as we explore it as a city council. So, uh, I'm grateful to the Planning Commission for the work it does, uh, for the expertise some of you bring, for the experiences, community, some of you bring, a- all of those things, all of those, uh, contribute to a very effective way of, of dealing with issues. So, uh, thank you all for that. Okay, I think that is it for tonight. Staff, thank you very much for your presentation and help on this. Uh, Commissioners and Council, that's it. Uh, we are adjourned at seven thirty-two.